How to make stronger communities, that a lot of you seem to have resources for parks and libraries and public safety and all the other things that come with that. So we see this in all ultimately doing work to make strong communities. And we focus on traded sector businesses because they are the ones that contribute to the local tax base. They're the ones that generally create candy weight jobs, which as I said is important for us. And it's that multiplier effect of manufacturing. When we look at the supply chain of a manufacturer, they generally buy things from other suppliers in the area. That makes economic impact, you know, for when they sell some things, particularly when they sell something out of the area that brings money into the community. And that money spreads throughout their supply chain and through their employees as well, through their salaries.
And we like to share why we focus on traded sector because sometimes we get asked, right? And we have other partners in our region that support the retail businesses like our downtown associations and our chambers of commerce. And there's certainly enough businesses and enough work for us to all do, but we essentially focus on traded sector.
Can you explain what exactly traded sector is?
Oh, sure. That's fair. It is defined by state statute and the definition is very simple, but essentially it's anybody that makes and sells a product on a larger domestic or international market. So it's somebody that's making and selling a product competing outside of their region so that monies like Eric said from outside the region, the state, the country are coming into our area where potentially a retail business, I like to use the example of a downtown coffee shop, right? So you've got a downtown coffee shop and they're kind of keeping business and commerce and money circulating within that community. And they're considered a retail business, but maybe those beans that they're using that are roasted in Washington, right? That company is a traded sector company because they are competing on a larger marketplace for someone's business. And ultimately those monies that are paid for those beans are going back to that company in Washington. So we support the traded sector businesses within Oregon so that we're growing those businesses and monies are coming from elsewhere into our community. And then retail kind of generally has the sense of keeping it in the trade industry.
As a community, you know, those are all parts of your economy. So that's why, you know, one isn't necessarily more important than others is that we need to work closely with industry programs, chambers of commerce, just to be sure that all the businesses are of ours, you know, that don't touch the economy. You know, try to do our fair share of that coordinate. As I mentioned before, the business retention expansion is what we concentrate on, but we also do business recruitment. We work with Business Oregon, sort of our partner, or the main regional organization that they work with to package up information when they have a prospect. Generally, this could be anything from sending this information on a building to very much detailed information on power capacity, water and sewer capacity. Some of these projects that we work on from a recruitment perspective can take. One of our recent successes, Dollar General Distribution Center, it was almost four years to the day when they first contacted us. So their consultant contacted us to when they did a groundbreaking for their 900,000 square foot facility that's coming up in Salem right now. So it's, it's, it can be a long process. It is an important process that, kind of why we're here to talk to you about tonight, as far as getting to know what lands that you do have. So that the kinds of industries that you're talking to, you know, are appropriate for the community. But, you know, if you don't have a lot of water, you shouldn't be going after a big brewery. If you don't have a lot of power, then data centers might not be a great pick. If you have power capacity, data centers might be a really neat opportunity for you. So that's all part of this process.
Yeah, and working with the community on your own strategic plan and making sure that the businesses that are being recruited to the community just aren't the right fit.
And we do have a strategic plan.
Yep.
You know, so that's great.
Next slide please.
I don't think it's like in hot weather either. Weird. Oh.
It's a crazy slide.
Oh, the pasta.
Okay.
I don't know why.
Okay, okay, it's fancy.
It's all there.
It's surprising.
All the clicks. Okay, let's go back. Okay.
We planned it that way.
Tricking me.
Keeping us all in our shoes. So around the industrial lands, you know, as I mentioned, with both recruitment and expansion, you know, it's important for us as an archeological organization to understand and for our communities that we work with to understand what is their inventory of lands? Is the zoning appropriate for the types of businesses you want to save your strategy? We talked about readiness there. We kind of run the joke in the valley that if you look at industrial or zoning maps and you see purple, that's usually industrial in many maps. But it's also like a wetland's map, you know, if it's owned industrial, then it's probably a good chance that it's a wetland. In some cases, some of the industrial sites along the I-5 corridor or the valley were, you know, 70, 80% wetlands mitigated. You know, floodplain, infrastructure, you know, those types of issues. And what's important in that regard is not that they're necessarily deal killers, but it's the certainty that you provide in the process. So if you know what needs to be done and you can talk to an investor about that in advance, that's great. If you just say, hey, we have this land, we don't know anything about the environmental issues of the wetlands, or we know there's some cattails out that we deal with, that'll scare people off. So that's why we spend a lot of time on the front end to be sure that these sites are ready to go. We talked about consistency with strategic plans or if you've done an economic opportunity analysis, you know, we look at those. Our SEDS document, which is the Community Economic Development Strategy that the Council of Governments puts together as the Economic Development District, which they recently did. And we've gotten involved in that to try to be sure that we sit the industries that they were talking about being opportunities for the region did reflect where our resources and interests were. And then the listing and marketing, we work with Business Oregon again on a database of industrial sites called Oregon Prospector. And we're the ones that generally collect the information on sites that are ready to go and get that loaded in there so we can respond when the state has a lead for us. I did bring in, sorry.
Yeah, I'll jump in real quick. There's, there's a couple of reasons, right? Like I can give you some examples of why these things, these few items are really important to be paying attention to. In 2018, the city of Newburgh lost three of their traded sector manufacturing employers because they did not have enough industrial land for those existing businesses to expand, right? So this is not just missing out on recruitment opportunities. This is missing out on the opportunity to grow local businesses who were very, I mean, all three of these businesses were very committed to community service and impact. They were, their average annual wage was in the $80,000 to $100,000 range. These were good businesses that just didn't have access to land to expand. And preparing for that is excruciatingly important. In addition to sort of having the vision and then making sure that whatever land you do have available is prepared and is listed. And I've had these conversations with city managers in the past where they said, but we have this industrial land and you guys are working with the state and I know that there's opportunities, you know, for federal funding for the CHIPS Act. Can we just recruit businesses to those properties? And our first response is, is the property listed? Because we cannot propose a property that is not for sale. It must be listed with a price attached to it. That's our state process requirement. So it's, it's just seems simple and fundamental, but in order sometimes for a property owner to list that property, they want to make sure that they're not having to invest a lot of money in some sort of mitigating factor. Is it a brownfield? Doesn't have a wetlands issue? And sometimes they have to invest money in order to discover that or to address that. So we try to identify those opportunities, work with those landowners, identify. Sometimes there are state resources to help pay for any sort of, you know, mitigation or addressing those issues or a ground field program so that we can get to the point where we can list those properties and then utilize them for recruitment. And I think that example of the city of Newburgh is a really good one because first of all, the, anybody that's in business, right, knows that the cheapest customer you ever have is the one you already have, right? So keeping those businesses in place is vital. And more than 86% of all new jobs are created by existing businesses. So it's really important to keep them there. And the longer the businesses in your community, generally, the more they're going to be committed to the health of that community. So we want longevity with our business partners in our region, right? It's, it's not about chasing the next shiny thing and finding that next employer because, you know, frankly, there's some competition for workforce right now. It's mostly, I'd say 90% of the work we do is around making sure that we're retaining our businesses. And we're familiar with one or two locally that are looking to expand. And they're up against that. They're looking and saying, well, what are my options here versus anywhere else? And why would I stay here versus anywhere else? And if I wanted to grow beyond the boundaries of my current footprint, could I do that in this community? And we want to be able to say, these are the resources, this is why we want you to stay here. And there's multiple opportunities within this community and we'd like to make sure that you're top of the list for those.
We have in the past made, getting back to the being for sale or being listed, we have in the past, I have in the past, being an exception. And we had a good project, we had a perfect piece of property. One of our best colleagues was like, oh, they're really interested in selling it. It was a, it was former ag land, so we have a lot of the, a lot of the work in this region that we do with particularly, once you get out of, out of the bigger state of Salem, you're dealing with, with former farmland, you're dealing with families and maybe second, third generation folks that own the properties, which can be tricky. It's not like everybody's got a big industrial park with a developer cap. So the project I'm referring to is we did quite a bit of work, got the utility involved, Portland General went through a lot of processes, we're going back and forth. The consultant time came to get the company here to look at the site. And we were told by the gentleman that we've been working with that that family decided not to sell. And they want to keep it for the next generation, which is great, but it would have been selfishly, we spent a little more time on them than we would have liked to at that point. So we also raised expectations with the prospect or consultant, Portland General, so.
That's why it's a state requirement, so.
And the Cent Core. Probably more important. So as, as an example, just some of the work we've done as far as industrial readiness in the past, one that's a little closer to the work I've been doing the last few years and actually goes back to 20-plus years when I worked for the state of Oregon, was the city of Salem's Mill Creek Project. Go to the next slide. So for folks that aren't aware, this is in South Salem, just off of I-5. And it was originally 600-plus acres of farmland that was owned by Farm Corrections. It was farm land that was used to grow for both the state hospital system and the state correction system. Legislature directed corrections to make it into job creation land. And sometime around 2002, 2003, the work started on that. That's when I worked for the state. So we were involved, Business Oregon was involved, City of Salem, and then working with DAS to try to figure out what needed to be done to get that site ready to go. And this was a very long process, but when you're looking at former ag land, there was questions about environmental, any sorts of fertilizer things that might be in the land, so we had to go through an environmental process. Wetlands determination, delineation and mitigation. So on that map on the, on the left, in the middle of that yellow, you can see a little bit of a blue area there. That is actually the wetlands that had been created for that whole area. So the whole 600 acres was ready as a result of us creating some wetlands areas in the middle. So it was kind of pre-mitigated. Same thing for environmental reviews, same thing for stormwater. We worked with the city of Salem on identifying industrial, the industries that they wanted to support. They talked about food and beverage being important, particularly as you know, in the land valley and having a lot of food processors in the region. That meant being sure that we had water and sewer to accommodate those types of industries. The state was also interested in doing some improvements to I-5 there at Kubler. That opened that area up for warehouse and distribution and logistics, which if you know that area, that's the group that really took off, you know, there. So as a result, 20, almost 20 years later, most of that land now is, is been developed or is tied to development. A lot of warehouse and distribution, Home Depot, Amazon, when Amazon located there, it kind of opened up the entire South, you know, Salem area to the Portland metro market, prices went up and the attention got there. So it's all, almost all owned by private developers now that are developing full projects. We've had three or four recent locations there that are in construction now. The picture on the right shows, that's from Skinnell, which is one of the developers. There's the wetland I was referring to, the mitigation pond in the middle. And then they're doing spec buildings on the, on the, to the right, on the east side. So those are buildings that they're putting up for, to sell to, to these two businesses that are looking for, you know, space that's already been constructed. The bigger building on the right-hand side is a company called Jensco, it's an HVAC equipment company that's going to be doing some warehousing, but also 40% of that space is manufacturing for their product. And then the bigger project, the bigger building on the other side of the water there is the, is the Dollar General Distribution Facility I mentioned. So, you know, we continue to kind of get involved in that one over the years from the perspective of working with the various agencies on regulatory review and getting it ready to go. Cent Core worked from a marketing perspective with the city of Salem to market the property, get those sites on industrial database, get brochures and maps done so we can, you know, and we worked with the prospects of the sites.
Do you know, Eric, how, how many square feet of building has occurred out in that property?
With a calculator and some time, they can. Just as an example, I mean, that Dollar General is 900,000 square feet and roughly 150 million. They've already spent, I think, 102 million already in some of the bigger area to get over there. The, I think it's a $92 million project, this bigger building on the right side, that's the Jensco building. So it's, you know, we're, we're talking in the hundreds of millions of dollars, not probably go to a Brazilian at this point. It was on the stall, you know, almost a million square feet.
Is that an enterprise zone?
Yes.
Which we also know.
Yes.
Am I correct in assuming the Cent Core helped us get our enterprise zone?
We were just talking about, neither of us were at Cent Core at the time. I would guess that we did, my predecessor, it's 10 years ago, so that would have been Ray Burst, I think.
It expires next year, right? So that would have been 10 years ago.
Neither Chad Freeman or Ray Burst would have been involved. We, I mean, the city was the applicant, so we may have helped with, you know, pack through some of the information, I'm not sure. But we hired the manager of records, so when, was it Chad?
I think because we did the same time.
Oh, that's when you did the North Marion line.
Right, right.
That's right.
Do you know, you've done any other projects for your?
Do we, projects that look like industrial lands or?
Anything like what you're proposing today as far as what you can do for us in our enterprise zone and our industrial zone?
Like this project, but like in a similar.
Sure.
That one.
Have you done any of that?
So one of the projects that we've worked on over the last few years was recruitment of Forest River to their current location in Sheridan. So, and that was prior to us serving on contract with the county, but we've always sort of tried to provide recruitment support for Marionville and the Anvil counties. So we were one of the active parties with the state that helped them identify a location. And we were one of the partners that was at the table saying, hey, Sheridan, this site in Sheridan is a really good location. We think it's good for workforce. It was a project that did not require I-5 adjacency, but did need access to a highway. So we looked at that sort of activity in terms of supply chain management, it fit what their expectations and needs were in terms of utility utilization. It was just a really good fit. And so we were on the recruitment side of that project, getting them to locate here. They did actually submit an application to utilize the enterprise zone. That was an attractive component to them. Ultimately, they ended up not pursuing the tax exemption. They're actually managed by a much larger company that's back east and they decided sort of the juice of the paperwork wasn't worth the squeeze. It does also come with other, you know, programmatic requirements, but they were an applicant originally. It was an attractive component of the site for them and that's one of the projects. At the time though, my understanding, because again, it was before our time with Cent Core, that property was already designated as industrial and for sale. So we came in and, while, while we're working, Forest River has multiple locations in our region. So they're one of the businesses that we support. We knew they were looking to expand. We wanted to keep them in our region for the expansion. And that's why we aggressively pursued finding a location within our region for them.
We did talk to, at least in our time, at least one, the, that was looking at the building, which is now this upper Robert Seaton Center.
Oh, yeah, there were a couple. So when that building was.
Once, once the manufacturing left there, that was the building, we did have some connection with the building owner trying to get information to a client that was interested in that.
Yeah, and we have a, we used to have a really active recruitment team with the state of Oregon that would go on outbound trips. And that was one of the properties that we were holding to market on our outbound trips. And as you all know, it was purchased and then that didn't work out so well. I see Jim smiling and nodding his head. And that was, you know, an unfortunate surprise to everyone, but ultimately I think the current and future use is a pretty exciting one as well. Absolutely. We have just a couple more slides to get through to talk about.
And we do have some ongoing projects we are working on right now in Sheridan to, to the enterprise zone too.
Okay, so the, the project that we're proposing takes three phases. And really this is us working with the city on an industrial lands program, which looks like sort of the initial stage being an assessment. We expect that to be a 12-week process. And in having conversation with Mayor George and with the city manager, Bell, we decided that we wanted to take an approach where we can do an initial assessment and then sort of stop, review our findings and determine the best way to move forward. So that assessment will be to understand what is the current situation of your industrial lands? What does the current ownership look like? What does readiness in terms of future availability? I know, for example, right, there's some residential use of assigned industrial lands within the community. So we want to make sure we fully understand not just that, but also whatever the strategic plans are that you all currently have in place or that design as it relates to any other sort of proposed strategic plan, like your commercial opportunities. After we do that initial assessment and we move on to the next phases, phase two would be engagement. That's where we're most deeply engaging with those current landowners. We start working with our site selecting partners. So there, there is a, there are many groups out there in the world that actually work with industry partners to identify site opportunities. So for example, if Tesla is looking for a new manufacturing location, it's, it's unlikely that you're going to get someone from Tesla reaching out. You're probably going to get someone that they've hired who's a site selector consultant that's going to be reaching out to us and the state. So we'll be working with those folks to identify based off of the findings of the assessment, what might be a good opportunity for this community? So again, it goes back to like Eric said, is it a high utility using industry? Do you guys have that utility? Is it something that the community is already strategically planning to build out so it could be a future opportunity? There's a lot to consider when you start to piece together not just the current assets, but any sort of planned investment and ultimate opportunity. Phase three would be that recommendation phase. So now we've done the assessment, we've engaged all of the partners, including current landowners, including potentially DLCD, the Council of Governments. We're looking at all of our planning partners and industry recruitment partners, and then we put together the recommendation. So we would be offering to you a recommendation of best use in our opinion. So highest and best use of industrial property generally tends to provide the highest tax base to the community. For your community in particular, you might say, we care about number of jobs more than anything and we want to target this type of a job. We can come back to you and either be able to say, hey, we think that's a real opportunity here based off the type of industry we think would be interested in this location. Or we might come back and say, we think the best opportunity for you is to look at a large facility investment. That's probably going to offer fewer jobs, but maybe that's a good fit, right? So we're going to come back and make that recommendation, which will also prepare you for next steps. We believe that there's an opportunity for us to offer you a next step proposal where we're engaged in that process, but we don't expect that you'll just engage us in that process. Maybe you'll want to take a different approach. But at least you would have recommendations for highest and best use of that property and some established next steps so that you're armed with the ability to make decisions going forward. Any questions about the timeline? I know it's kind of high level, but there's a little more detail. All right.
Would we, would we have an opportunity to decline level three or two after agreeing to one?
Oh, absolutely. So after we stop, well, first of all, after we are done with phase one, we have built in a stopping point. So after phase one, if we do that assessment and we're coming with our initial report, which will not be nearly as thorough as the final report would be, that is to stop and assess. And so for the team to be able to say, yeah, I feel like where this is going, this makes sense. Or to say, hey, you know, we want to switch here. We want to, we want to turn the page.
Emphasize this, not.
Yeah, exactly.
Just a kind of way to do a, a check early on in the process before we go down too far.
And also I'm looking at my boss over my shoulder here, but, you know, to make sure he's nodding along with me. But, you know, Cent Core, we've been here for 42, almost 43 years now. We're a long time community partner. So if at any point during the process, either a partner, and we can write this into contractual language, right? I'm sure the city will, you know, have some sort of language that they want to share with us. If, if it looks like it's not moving forward in a way that's beneficial to the city, we want to make sure that our, our city partners are happy with what you're paying for, the work that you're getting and how things are moving forward. So we either need to be able to stop and assess and again, sort of change course or say, hey, we've done, we've done a good job to this point, let's, let's stop it here. We want to be a good partner, right? We're not here to sell you.
We're going to be happy.
Yeah, we're not traveling salesmen. We're, we're long-term partners, so.
I'm just concerned, you know, our city staff is shorthanded and busy and we have a city hall that's too small. And I mean, it's adding another job to a lot of our employees. And I know it looks like it's 10 hours a week, but our staff might be spending that much too.
Absolutely.
So I can't even be concerned with that.
Well, and particularly early on when we're doing the assessment, it's important for us to be sure that we have the public works engagement. And just, you know, working with Heidi to be sure that, that we understand where the waters, you know, the limitations or opportunities are there. Just, just like we'd be working with Portland General, you know, the power side. We, we've heard kind of big picture that there's an opportunity for capacity in this area. But anything utility does generally has a long time period attached to their investment. But they've been very willing to partner in this kind of work. It's in their best interest to have land available for power users too.
And Eric used to work for Pacific Power and in my background, I worked in industry and business development. And so we understand that when you bring your partners to the table, you need to be having valuable conversations and that essentially time is money. And so the way that we see approaching these sorts of projects with our community partners is that we're providing capacity, right? So it's not about us taking the time of, of city staff. We want to make sure, and we even wrote into the proposal to make sure that you understand that, of course, we will need your participation and some time. But our intention is to give you capacity to do this sort of planning work that puts the community in a better position to be generating revenue long-term from these sort of larger investments.
I guess also if there are limitations on the land that's currently industrially zoned, then this provides information back to this, this community, back to the state to say, all right, maybe we need to be talking to DLCD and the Council of Governments about some sort of strategy to have better quality industrial land available for the community to have those jobs created in the future. You know, there's no differentiation in zoning for like, oh, this is ready to go industrial versus, you know.
Hundred-year floodplain.
Yeah, exactly. They only look at colors on a map. So, you know, it's in the community's best interest to really get a feel for how real development opportunities are in the sites and be able to accommodate them, to be able to accommodate future development.
Thank you for that question.
Roxy, can I, can I say something real quick? To all, if there's anything I can do, I'll be in city hall, open office hours. Anyone from the community who wants to come and talk to me from 10 to 1 on Fridays. But other than that, I'm also available to cope with, with whatever. And I can work on stuff if no one comes to talk to me. I'm already here at city hall, so I can help. And when, I don't know how much I would be with public works, but I could.
10 to 1 on Friday and I'm ready.
Well, I mean, even, even after that.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that will pay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Roxy, you want to say something?
The only thing I want to add, and it's just that, you know, our water supply is limited. So that would be a big concern as far as bringing in industries that make a big amount of water.
Currently limited, but a significant future opportunity, right?
Limited for now.
Yeah, but definitely.
Yeah. Well, one of the things about doing these sorts of projects is that by engaging the partners such as the Council of Governments and the strategic planning process, your regional economic development folks, or planning around industrial lands, will be bringing in the state and having these conversations on a regular basis. Is that as you identify these projects and the cost to invest in that long-term infrastructure, right? As you know, Heidi, right, you bring in all of those partners and get sort of the collaborative partnership moving forward and you're more likely to be able to secure future funds.
And that we as a council need to understand.
Yes.
And Business Oregon. The Business Oregon, in the last session, they carved out some funding in the strategic reserve program that they have and they usually don't do industrial lands work with that, but in this case they carved out some money to help both publicly owned and privately owned industrial lands become ready. So we had four in our region that we support, they got funded and everything from transportation planning to, I want it to house, they're trying to move an underground stream that is, they have a old mill site there, which is not a cheap project either, along the workforce development. So the state recognizes, I guess we should have started with this, we talked about industrial land, like Mill Creek for example, we don't have any land to market at Mill Creek anymore. So when we get a call from somebody saying, hey, we're looking for X number of acres, you know, it's, there's not a lot of sites in reach. And when we say our region, you know, our three counties, it's worse, you know, more limited in the Portland metro area, which is usually where people sort of start. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for communities like Sheridan to, if there's industrial lands that can, can be targeted, the state does right now have resources and have interest in trying to develop the inventory of available sites for future development and future job creation.
I think Centcor currently, we sit on five or six different EOAs. We were extremely active in the sets. If you look through that document, a few learnings kind of all over it. Participating in those ways also gives us correct access to the state partners. One of the reasons why they utilize those funds for industrial lands readiness is because regional organizations such as ours, there's four in the state, I would say three others, four, is because we're going to them saying, this is what's needed, this is what's needed, this is what our communities need, this is what our businesses need, and we offer the voice. So I, I always tell the communities that are in our region that the best way to get value out of us is to lean in and engage us as deeply as you can. That's the best way, right, to get value out of any partner. And we believe that there's real opportunity in the city of Sheridan and the vision that you guys have whenever I've had conversations with Heidi or, you know, with Jim or, sorry, with Councilman Buckles or Mayor George, I see it, we see it, we see that vision. And, I mean, we're passionate about the work we do. For us, this isn't, you know, checking a box. We're not coming into this region from outside of it saying, we already have a plan, we created somewhere else and we're going to plug it later. We really do want to see the best and highest use and what this community wants to come to fruition within your industrial lands portfolio. Yeah, so we've probably already gone well over our time. Certainly if you have additional questions, Heidi has our contact information that's up here as well, our email address.
Excuse me, I understand that you mentioned the enterprise zone that helps move things along. We're also part of an opportunity zone. I don't know what, how that compares to the enterprise zone. What are the differences in that? Do they have, does that help? Is it supposed to?
We're really on the last couple of years of that incentive, so I think it's not, it's nowhere near as strong an incentive as it was ten years ago. Because when you're looking at kind of present value of ten-year program, when you're in nine and ten of it, there's not an awful lot there anymore. What we did find in our region, I was, I just started at Centcor when this was all going on at the federal level. So I didn't know, I wasn't involved when they identified where the, to the state to recommend their recommendations to the governor's office where the, you know, opportunity zones would be. I know as a region, we really tried to look at places where it could be industrial development and it really did seem like the way the system and the programs developed, the projects I'm aware at least that came in were mostly urban, you know, neighborhoods and like in Salem, the big hotel project downtown, and were a big opportunity, some of the project there because you had to have people already with, to go and have developers that had money that was going to get capital gains taxes. So you're already dealing with a finite group of people that were looking to invest. So it wasn't quite what we had hoped it would be. We had some good successes, but it was, it's not, it was confusing also.
It was very.
We had a lot of zones.
And because of the way that it's structured, like Eric said, the sooner you invest in that zone, the, the greater the value, right? So if you could get invested, create, what do they call that? An account, a, a fund, sorry. As soon as you could create a fund, identify the property, identify the project, get multiple investors within a single fund and build something, which really needed to be within two years to get the full value of that investment based off of the way the zone was structured. So anything that was in that instance, if the city of Sheridan had prepared industrial land, right, then again, you understood any sort of issues with, with the land, it had, maybe had already gone through environmental, it already had, you know, it was, it was shell ready, right? So it wasn't a brownfield, it didn't have any sort of remediation that needed to happen and it was for sale, then it would have been prime for one of those first two-year investments. Anything that wasn't in that state was extremely difficult, if at all possible, to get an investment package put together within the first two years. And so every year subsequently, and now we only have a year and a half, two years left on that program, it's just not attractive to people to invest, yeah.
Right, anybody have any questions or concerns about any of this? I noticed phase one says November, is that as early as you can start?
Oh, we can absolutely discuss starting sooner. I think the reason why we put November in part was because we weren't sure how long your process might be and we wanted to give you an opportunity to say, okay, if we need time, then, then we know we can start then. But I would, I'm happy to follow up with you to talk about what works best for you and kind of what fits into our schedule as well. Yeah. Wonderful, well, thank you for so much time.
Thank you for your time, yeah, stay, stay cool.
We'll see you all.
Thank you for coming.
All right, so next we're going to move into executive sessions. So there's three. So the first one.